Been backed up for two weeks. There's a lot of news.
They're downloading your files. Did you move it? Did you see that? Did you see what I just did? I said, "Did you move it?" That's a dang gum shank.
Oh, now he's in his camera. Get out the camera. Push your home button.
Why are you on the camera?
Leave or move it or lose it.
Yeah, something else.
Come on, Mitchell. Are you just waiting for Santa? October fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, regular city council meeting. It's called to order. Everyone please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
But everyone, please remain standing. We'd like to ask evangelist Johnson, please come give us a prayer.
Praise the Lord. The word of God tells us to come before His presence with thanksgiving and into His courts with praise and to be thankful and bless His name. And we do have so much to be thankful for. We're here and we're here because of His grace and because of His mercy. And we thank You, Lord, that we're able to come to You this evening and ask You for Your favors. For we need You. We need You every hour. And oh, God, there are so many things that are on our hearts, on our minds, so many things that need to be done. And here we are gathered with people from the city and our leaders. And we're asking You to give guidance and to give direction. Father, in the name of Jesus, we're asking You to grant wisdom in every area. And oh, God, we ask that You bring us all together and bind us together in Christian love, in the name of Jesus. And Lord, we just thank You for this opportunity to come and say thank You. Thank You. There are many people that are suffering all over the land, but You've been good to us. We're here again because of Your grace. And we thank You for it. And let all the people say, "Thank You, Lord."
Thank you, Lord.
Amen.
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Present.
Councilman Oden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Proton William.
Present.
And Councilman Shizam.
Present.
We have seven present tonight and we do have a quorum.
Right. Everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? I think we made some adjustments at the orientation meeting. So we're striking item B. So item C will become item B. Anything else we need to change on the agenda? Add? Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda with the deletion of one of the items.
Support.
The property moved supported. Y'all stepped on Clarence' toes, but it's okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, it passes. Presentation, Inksster Beautification Certificates. Tony Bailey.
All right.
Now just working woman in.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Clerk, City Treasurer, City Attorney, Department Heads, the audience and those who viewing. Um, before you, we had, September was the end of our community cleanup, having the dumpsters out for the community to utilize. But still, all year long, we still have, you know, cleaning up individuals, picking up litter without, you know, around the city. But I'd just like to recognize a lot of the different volunteers and our sponsors and beautification awards. First, I'd like to say that a lot wouldn't happen, you know. I'd like to thank DPS, Jerome, you know, getting the dumpsters, you know, when I need them at my four locations. And Honorable Judge Sabrina Johnson, with her help in the alternative program. They are out cleaning as well around the city. So I have a lot up here, but all names will not be called out. I want to start off with my sponsors. Okay, my first sponsor who is not here is Brad Delinsky. He's the operational manager or general manager of Granger in Wamalas and also a granger in the state of Ohio. So I will see to it that he gets his certificate. Okay, um, the sponsors, they kind of helped with the cleanup. And also, Inksster Beautification, we hosted an event in September. We're part of the Beautification Council of Southeast Michigan. And they always ask for the different cities in Southeast Michigan to host one of the quarterly meetings. So Inksster, we were obligated to host the fall meeting. So I'd like to thank GFL for, you know, sponsoring what donations that they had gave. And we have someone in attendance, Mary Jo, who's going to accept the certificate for GFL.
Thank you.
And some of my Inksster members, they can come up if you want. Okay, um, I don't see him if he's here. Abe with Midwest Recycling is somebody here to accept the certificate. Abe. Not Abe. We'll see to it that he gets his certificate. I also like to thank Allen Brothers. David John Esquire. Would you like to come and accept? Okay, we're going to take a picture.
You're going to come up?
All right.
He's going to come up now.
He going to do the hugging. Have to play out.
Now I have three that's for City of Inksster. I don't have no names. I'mma call the names. But I have City of Inksster on these certificates. They also made, you know, donations or helped out. First would be Sade. We appreciate. Next will be DPS, Jerome Bithens.
You know you get paid for this, right?
Right.
He on the clock.
Right now.
Getting a certificate and a paycheck.
Best one would be for Troy Seaton. With our hosting, this was Inksster our first time hosting a meeting and it went over very well. Troy.
He's working right now.
He working? Okay, we'll see to it that he gets his certificate.
Here you go. They want your picture.
All right.
Get your props.
She got time and a half for that.
I have certificates for volunteers, but I don't see any of them out in the audience. So I will see to it that they get their certificates. Okay, the next group they adopted, May, AKA Sonia Jackson. And she got Sigma them to come and help. And May, they did at LeMone Park and up at the Rec Center. So the president of AKA Danielle, if you want to come and accept all these certificates. And you'll see to that everyone gets theirs. Somebody, if you have anybody that's from AKA or Sigma that's in the audience, all come up. Okay, hi Gregory.
What she said? Did she ask for AKAs?
Of the AKAs that volunteered in May.
Oh, that wasn't kind.
Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated and Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated. Thank you.
We have one beautification award is June Patterson and she's not here. We'll see to it that she gets hers award. And for some volunteers that we have, Michelle Pedaway, Andre Samper and Veronica Samper, they from Allen Brothers and they helped to make sure that we got our food, donuts, coffee, everything, you know. So we appreciate it very much. So I have certificate and these can go to Mr. David. He has see to it that they get their. Thank you.
That's it? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support. The property moved supported. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Fortune commissions? I haven't been at this time. We have some vacancies though.
We have tons of vacancies. What we need is residents.
We need some residents. We have DDA vacancy. We have some other important ones too, though. Are we all set with commission on A G? Do we have vacancy there too? Yeah, I think we have a vacancy there too. We have nothing?
What?
No nominations? Brownfield too? Yes, you on both of them. Okay, y'all, we got to come to next meeting with some nominations. Let's work on it. Felicia sent us an email reminding us. Okay. Previous business. Yeah, I don't know why that's still there. Thought you took it off. Yeah, yeah, I mean, this is one of the three or four parcels that the housing asked us to reconvey. I think the agreement was some surveys are going to be done and we're going to take them all at one time instead of doing it piecemeal because, you know, make sure, we don't know what the survey is going to come back and say. So if we take no action, it dies. But then since we brought it up at the last meeting, it had to be put on the agenda. So do you have a motion? I'm agenda. No, but I still got to ask for the motion. I mean, if you don't make a motion, it dies. But I'm asking for a motion because it's on the agenda. No motion? No motion? Okay, it dies. Second reading.
Council to offer a second reading and approval of tax amendments to the city zoning ordinance to address zoning and site improvement requirements for mobile food vendors, food trucks and mobile food courts per the recommendations of the planning commission. For a list of affected ordinance sections, please see the background information.
Ms. Jordan? Still move? Oh, Sabrina, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Council. So a public hearing was held and the amendments were recommended for approval by the planning commission on Monday, September twenty-fourth. No public comments were received. Council then held the first reading on the proposed tax amendments on October first. And following the first reading, planning staff did make one minor change. We added some language just to clarify that mobile food vendors must have been in an outdoor location. Thank you.
Okay. All right, do you have a motion? No move. Support. The property moved and supported. Discussion?
I have a question. Standards for all mobile food courts, parks. Letter C in the handicapped accessible bathroom facility. This is a mobile food court, right? They move around?
No, the intention of a food truck court is that, well, the tenants, the food trucks, they may change out. The actual location of the food truck court would be more permanent in nature in that it would have probably a permanent seating area and permanent washing facilities. So a good example of that is there was, there was one called Mark's Carts in Ann Arbor, in downtown Ann Arbor. And with that facility, it existed on the same site for about ten years. I think it just recently closed. And it had about five different food trucks or food truck spots. And the leases on those spots would, would change out periodically.
So someone would have to develop a food court according to this ordinance. It would have to be built. At least bathrooms and different stuff.
But that, that being said, an individual food truck could be more of a temporary situation. And that's why there's, there's two separate sections. One for individual trucks and one for a more permanent food truck court.
Because my, my question was during the Summer Fest, there are food trucks at that event. So that's a temporary situation. It's not a permanent situation. Uh, I'd like to ask about, because we also have these other vendors that sell hot dogs right there on Inksster Road and Cherry Hill. What do, what do, what do they come under? Because it's mobile.
Right, so, so there's, that's why we, we tried not to step on the toes of the vendor license section in municipal code. This was really oriented towards the, the food trucks themselves from a zoning perspective.
It's just a vehicle that you start up and drive off?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. New business?
Item A is consideration and approval to purchase two commercial parcels, one structure, two seven two oh six Michigan Ave, which is duly noted, which is located on the north side of Michigan Avenue between Inksster Road, as duly noted, and two seven two one zero Michigan Ave, which is duly noted, in the total of nineteen thousand. So moved.
Support. The property moved and support, discussion?
Yes, um, do we have future plans on what, what we want to develop there?
Yeah, you're going to decide that. We're going to have a public hearing coming up on the downtown plan soon.
Okay.
So we'll get some input from the residents and from you and DDA, hopefully, and Tifa. And, and then we'll start kind of mapping out what we want to, the downtown areas look like.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
Item B is consideration and approval of the adoption of a resolution to authorize the city treasurer to invest city funds in the governments of Michigan investing cooperatively Gov Make Investment Pool. So moved.
Support. The property moved and supported. Discussion? Mayor Proton?
Well, I still don't see, um, I, I still think we should be investing taxpayer dollars into what we call some kind of, well, not stock, but investing into something. I just see it as a gamble. I don't see how we're going, you know, if things change, then we, we losing, we losing taxpayer dollars. And I would, I don't want to put those dollars at risk.
So a couple, couple of things. One is, you know, we have, under the state law, Public Act, uh, two, Public Act twenty, we have a very limited pool of investments that we can make. We can't invest in stocks, you know, that you see on, on, uh, New York Stock Exchange, the Dow Jones. We can't invest in those things. The type of investments that we're investing in are, are, you know, I don't consider any investment to be riskless, but these are very, very low risk type of investments. Treasury securities, treasury bills that are generally considered to be as secure if, you know, on par with a bank account. So the only alternative is for us to have money sitting in our, our checking account and we're leaving interest on the table that can be achieved with virtually no risk. So there, there's, there's, again, there's really not a rational basis for not going out seeking an investment that gives us liquidity, that minimizes our risk and gives us a, a, a moderate level of return. So I hear your concern, but that's why we structured these types of investments. And to, to not do so would just be overly cautious for no, for no rational reason.
The question, how long have these investments been in existence? And can you give me an example of any municipality that has made these investments and had a return?
Yeah, I'm, I, I, I can provide you with the list. Almost, you know, most, every government in Michigan is, is, is doing these types of investments. That's, that's the rationale for us having an investment policy. You know, this is a product that's specifically designed for cities such as us. You know, where we, you know, considerations for liquidity, considerations for risk. So it's, it's a, a very popular type of, of investment pool that specifically for cities in Michigan. So there's, there's a long, a long list. And this is a billion dollar investment pool. We're, we're, we're making a relatively small investment. There's billions of dollars.
How long has this been existed? Because you said this is kind of popular. I, I've been here three times and this is my first time hearing about it.
Well, because we didn't have the cash to invest. Yeah, we didn't have the cash to invest. You know, so it's, 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 and, and, and it's, it's investing in, in, um, a number of different types of securities. When we start talking about U- United States Treasuries and, and, and those types of securities, tho- those are, those are the things that the pool is investing in. Very secure, liquid investments.
If, if there's any point where things are going south, at, at what point do we pull before we lose all?
Well, we, we, these are generally, we're looking at maturity. So we're, we're locking up the money from anywhere from a seven day maturity upwards to a twelve month maturity. When we say things are going south, um, you know, the, the, you, if, if the US Treasury is going south, we got other things to worry about. And I, and I'm not, I'm not being facetious. I'm just saying, I'm trying to, to, to explain the type of security that we're talking about. You know, it's not like investing in Ford or, or a stock where there can be, be subject to some type of business downturn. You know, so literally, if, if, if a treasury, if the US government defaults on the investment, that, that's who we're essentially loaning money to the, to the federal government when we invest in the US Treasury. So if there's a default there, we're talking some pretty serious ramifications.
We're loaning money to the federal government that's in the debt ceiling, that's climbing higher and higher and higher. They have a deficit and we are going to keep loaning them money. So, okay.
Yeah, but you.
Well, we know my answer is we can move forward.
But we, just so we understand, the, the federal, the federal, well, I, I just want to make sure that, that everybody in the audience and watching, the federal government is the one government that can operate at a deficit. So they can continue to fund that. They don't have the responsibility of a balanced budget. So they continue to put the full faith and credit of the, of the country behind those types of, you know, paying on those types of securities. So your point about.
So even if there's a recession, we're, we're still okay? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not in a position to sit here and guarantee. I'm not in a position to guarantee, but again, the, the point is there has, there has not been a default on a federal, um, a federal security, a federal investment, I mean, in the last hundred years. You know, I mean, it's, it's, it's just, just from, just, you know, from, from a professional standpoint, it is as close to a riskless investment as you're, as you're generally going to find. I, I get your, your, your concern about making sure that the money, city's money is not put at risk. But it really would be a dereliction of my duty if I just had our money sitting essentially up under my mattress, sitting in a checking account, not generating any interest. That's, that's when we, when we put our, we have our money sitting in a checking account, it's, it's not generating any interest. We're just leaving money on the table. When we can go out and generate thirty, forty, fifty, a hundred thousand dollars, that can cover the cost of a police officer. That can cover the cost of a firefighter. That can cover the cost of us fixing some, fixing a sewer, adding risk, you know, without, without taking on any kind of meaningful risk. So again, I'm, I'm bringing this before the council because it's my responsibility to go out and do the types of things that we can in order to try and maximize the return on, on what cash we have collected within the city's treasury, so.
Can you tell us more about Costa Rica?
He said it's in his mattress.
I got worried when he said mattress.
But just to clarify, these are like T-bills. This is the, this is the investment that every person used to make when they couldn't. And the thing that is important about this is otherwise, it's just sitting there. Everybody knows there's no such thing as interest in banks and things of that anymore. So the money that we do have should be working for us. And this is, like you said, relatively no risk.
Exactly.
And once again, there's three months, there's six months, there's a year. And within that period of time, if you lost all of that money, we're firing you.
As long as we're clear on that.
Are you talking to Mayor?
Oh, he's elected.
I can't be fired.
And that includes Jack. All right, anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
It passes. Okay. Public participation. Barbara Cooper.
Mayor and Council? Good evening. She's back.
So we can eliminate yours? We can eliminate yours?
Well, yes.
Oh, okay. Both talking about pancakes, huh?
Yes. That's right. This Saturday, Inksster Goodfellas Pancake Breakfast, seven AM to noon at the Inksster Complex, twenty twenty-five Middle Belt. For those who do not know where it is, we need everybody's support. Donation is ten dollars. No child without a Christmas. And I will be back in the next month because our paper drive is in December. And I need the entire city's help to make sure that all our children have a very blessed and happy Christmas. But don't forget. But don't forget Saturday. Anybody need tickets? I got tickets. Gabe got tickets. Tony Bailey got tickets. And Sister Gibbs gone. Yep, Sister Gibbs is gone. She has tickets. But we need your help. Uh oh. What am I doing? Okay, it's moving. And we need our fire department and our police depart- and he's gone, our police department to help us out also. Libo. Our number one star. Our number one star. Amen. So once again, Inkster Goodfellas Pancake Breakfast. And to all of you who have purchased your tickets, thank you, thank you, thank you. And all those that put ads in our paper, thank you, thank you, thank you.
That's right.
All right.
And uh.
Uh, well, now.
I just wanna say, hey, family, how's how's everybody doing today? Bob, this is the most important event that we have, you know, for our kids, pancake breakfasts and all that. And uh guaranteed they're gonna be some of the best pancakes you ever had and all that. And where is the chief? Chief just, well, anyway, you know, chief always want pecans on his pancake. Well, anyway, I just wanna get a visit about this. Yeah, but we try to, you know, like, like, you know, like, what was that? The Burger King had it your way? I certainly agree. So we wanna thank you for all that, you know, and people come out and help us along. All right.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Byron Mingo. Good name.
Good evening, mayor, city council.
Good evening.
Residents of Inkster. I'm here as a representative for the Adopt a Child Size Program. It has been helping Inkster since nineteen eighty-six. It's been run by eleven people. I'm here representing the Adopt a Child Size Program for the uh Western Wayne County and Eastern Washington County Program. It's a five oh one C program that has helped children since nineteen eighty-six. Last year, they did over five hundred children in this area and two hundred and fifty of them came from the city of Inkster. We are in dire need of money. We are in dire need of don't um volunteers. And we're in dire need of pretty much everything. The committee is getting a little older. They need some help. This program has been around for a very, very long time and it is needed in the community. We're having our annual fundraiser at St. Clement's Episcopal Church on Sunday, four o'clock. And we got a few groups coming to sing. We have a harvest. We have uh the Inkster Community Corleers, the Washington Gospel Music Workshop, uh Kenneth Thomas and O- O'Nita Saunders. So we're asking that the community to come out and participate and help this organization. It is uh, it's been around for a very long time and St. Clement's has helped to support it over the last twenty years. And there's a need in this community to help some children who are disadvantaged. So we're gonna ask on Saturday and Sunday, if you're available, please come out and support this this program. And if you can't donate money, donate your time, cause it's really needed. And right now, sometimes time is, your volunteerism is more important than the money. Cause we want to keep this program going on for another thirty years.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there a contact number?
I have flyers. I have tickets to sell. You could buy tickets at the door. You can make a donation. The tickets are twenty dollars. If you wanna sponsor a kid, it's twenty-five dollars. And any donations that you make towards the organization would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia Coleman Morrison.
Good evening, mayor and council. Sure they. I wanna thank her personally, cause we're in a program together and um getting this word out. My name is Delicia Coleman Morrison. Delicia Coleman Morrison. Delicia Coleman Morrison. I'm running for Wayne County Third Circuit Court Judge and also citizens of Inkster. I thank you for the opportunity to um introduce myself to you. I'm running for Wayne County Third Circuit Court Nonincumbent. That is a uh ro- that is a judicial seat, that there are three open seats and there are six individuals running. And I'm running because after twenty-two years of practicing law in that court, I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired. I'm sick and tired of the judges that are on that court that are appointed or get elected because of their family name or who they know as opposed to their qualifications. Twenty-two years in that court, over a hundred and fifty jury trials. And I'm tired of me and my clients being treated as as if we don't count. As if we don't deserve the same justice as everyone else. I'm tired of just us. Practicing law in that court, I see judges that don't work in the community, that don't care about the community, that don't have the integrity or the experience to be on that bench. And I'm saying to you all as citizens of Inkster and Wayne County, that I have that experience. Twenty-two years practicing law, filing those motions during jury trials, advocating aggressively. And I know a few people that I've practiced law with over the years um will will state to you. I always fight for my clients and I wanna do that on the bench. I'm a mother, I'm a wife, I'm a mentor at midnight golf. I'm in the community and I care. And on my card, as you see, morality cannot be legislated, but behavior can be regulated. And it's time for us to have what we deserve, which is qualified, experienced individuals with integrity and commitment to the community on the bench. And I bring my uh request for all to vote for me November sixth. Um, in the, we remember in November to turn it over. Uh, we are on the back and and get informed. Um, some individuals saw us at uh the League of Women Voters in the Western Wayne NAACP. Uh, and I was quite fired up there because it it's just very frustrating to um to be one of the only candidates that have done capital cases, that have done jury trials in and out and all over. And then people come in and say, oh, well, I I've got a legacy. I've got family members. But you're not there every day. You don't see the injustices. You don't see judges that send people away because they don't know and they don't care. They don't address those individuals that have mental health, that have drug addiction or or the most common crime of being poor.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Um, your three minutes are up.
Thank you. Delicia Coleman Morrison. Delicia Coleman Morrison.
Number you can give me?
Yes. It is on the card, but also uh vote delicia comamorrison dot com. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also Libo.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Just my normal announcements. So just a few things going on, not this October. October nineteenth was this Friday, seven thirty PM is our last and final movie night of the season. It's getting a little bit too chilly out there. We will have heaters set up in the parking lot for those in attendance. Um, make sure you dress for the weather, though. Those heaters, you gotta be standing underneath them. It's not gonna heat outside, I promise you. Be nice if it did, though. But we're gonna have, as usual, free uh popcorn, hot dogs, and we're swapping out the snow cones with hot chocolate. So come and join us. As usual, we will have the raffle, giving out, giving away some bicycles as well as other items sponsored by F and R Automotive. And we are going to be watching Monster House. This movie is Halloween themed, so please have the kids come in their Halloween costume. They can do a little trunk retreat from the different police cars and also check out the police cars while they're at it. And we're gonna be coloring pumpkins. It's gonna be fun. Halloween one is one of my favorite ones. So please join us. Like I said, seven thirty PM, October nineteenth. If you get there a little bit earlier, you might have some more time to actually, you know, visit the cars and decorate the pumpkins and things like that. So please join us. The following day is the uh Inkster Police Department Public Auction. Saturday, October twentieth, from noon to one PM, will be the browsing. The bidding starts at one PM. I'm told we have over seven hundred items that we will be auctioning off. We're going to be varying, I've been told to expect um a lot of household goods, tools, bicycles, bicycles, some more bicycles. We also have tires I've seen out there. We have furniture. We got a lot of different things. Jewelry. Um, I don't think that the car is gonna get inform- we do have a vehicle, but I don't think it's gonna get the information back from the state of Michigan early enough to actually auction it off. But you never know. We could get it last minute in the mail. They could surprise us. Um, I do understand that there's a very big game going on that day. So what I'm going to do is set up my movie night screen. So listen, we're working on making it compatible so we can uh stream from an iPad to the projector. So we're we're testing it tomorrow. So if it works out, we'll have my screen set up uh playing the U of M MSU game. We did not think about that when we set the date. I promise you, it wasn't intentional. So please join us. Last but not least, um, the Halloween night party is going to be at the Booker Dozer Recreation Complex. The boom bash inside the building is from six to eight PM. The trunk retreat is from seven, eight PM. Inside the uh rec, we will have a haunted locker room, costume contest, face painting, live DJ, games and prizes, plus lots of candy. The trunk retreat outside is, of course, a regular trunk retreat. People will be giving out candy from their trunks. We are looking for trunkers. We need people to come and set up a trunk to give out. Looking at our local organizations, the AKAs, the Sigmas, anybody who wants to come and set up a trunk, please do. We have registration forms over on the table. Please fill one out. So that way, you know, we can get your information and get you signed up. We will take day of registrations as well, but this is just to tell us that you're interested in setting up a trunk. And uh, oh yes, don't have a flyer yet, but next Coffee with a Cop is November fourteenth, six thirty PM. I am exploring other options of um locations, so that is to be determined, trying to spread the wealth to our local businesses, not just stick to our normal two uh venues. So stand by the next couple of days for a flyer for that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Luana Abney Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Well, I'm here today on behalf of Starfish Family Services. The Starfish University is having a Bring Your Best Game, how to get fast results from government and nonprofit uh agencies. And it is on Wednesday, um, October the seventeenth. And if you register online between now and then, you will get a gift card. It says everyone gets a gift card. So if you register online, you'll get a gift card. That day is from nine to two. You will leave with a box lunch. Uh, we have a keynote spe- speaker shine tab. Uh, we have the Kidney Foundation there. Um, Officer Libo is there, is a panel that sits on the panel and the audience asks questions. This is our second one. So this is our second annual. We have somebody there from Bell Bozeman. We have life insurance there. And we have Michigan Works there, friend of the court. And um basically is there, the panel is there to tell you how to navigate the systems. Most people don't even know that, you know, when you go take a care of business, that you need to take your ID. So simple things like that that our people don't know. So everybody's welcome. And like I said, you can come without register, but if you register, you get a gift card. You need a gift card, mayor?
Thank you. Michael Wells.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And if I, I normally don't do this. I might need a little additional time. I wanna speak on something as a resident in the library. I'll make it as quick as possible. Uh, I wanna say I'm a little bit concerned on uh Michigan Avenue, particularly in the area between Harrison and Spring Hill on the north side of Michigan Avenue and Harrison, the motels on the south side. It seems to be a lot of prostitution and drugs in that area. Um, because every time when I go down, like when I'm going down that way, you could tell by the way people straggly looking and trying to get your attention to pull over and all of that. So uh I did inform the police department one day when I went in there about that. And it just makes, you know, I don't know how you're gonna be able to track businesses or people when the most, and I'm, I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say this. I believe uh Michigan Avenue is probably the highest volume in terms of traffic of any street within Inkster. And it looks pretty bad when you had that going on. Also on Harrison, there's an abandoned house and a garage at twenty-six, twenty-six Harrison. And I've seen people at times urinating back there and sometimes see people coming out. I don't know if they're, they're probably doing drugs or who knows, having sex. I don't know what's going on. I always keep my head on a swivel when I'm heading north on Harrison at Michigan Avenue. So I would really like to see more police step up. It's been like that for the last two or three years and it seems like it's the same recognizable faces when I'm going down there. And it looks really bad, especially on the main thoroughfare. Also, uh, on October sixth, I had to file a police report for the first time ever, cause I had my vehicle vandalized. And I noticed when I called the police, I I looked at the calendar. I kept getting, it kept getting a busy signal. And for thirty minutes, I kept calling, it kept getting a busy signal. So I went up to the police station to file a report and I realized in the calendar, the uh, the phone number, the non-emergency police and fire number is wrong. So they gave me the correct number and it's on every single month. So when they do the calendar next year, maybe someone can make sure the numbers are wrong. Uh, and the calendar had three, one, three, five, six, three, ninety-eight, seventy-four, but it's actually three, one, three, five, six, three, ninety-eight, fifty, and that's on every single month. So uh, if they can, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Um, so I just wanted to make that announcement. So please step up patrol around Michigan Avenue could and try to get it cleaned up. It it'd be getting colder, sort of probably dying down, but they really need to do to clean it up for next year. On a separate note, now I'm gonna wear my library board hat, okay? So now I'm not a resident. Now I'm a library board member here. Uh, and I'm gonna make this announcement real early so we don't have the problems like we had. Next year in November of next year, there'll be library board elections. We also have a millage renewal that'll be coming up to support the millage because it expires in two thousand nineteen. I'm coming a year and a month in advance because this time I would like to see there are six library board seats. They're all up for grabs at the same time. There should be no reason for us to have to depend on write-in candidates to fill the names. The last two elections, we didn't even have enough names on the ballot. It got so bad, and I'll tell you this, if you look on the board, there are two Wells. One is my cousin, because I begged him if he would run just to get the seats, to fill the seats. I almost thought by asking my sister, but then that would look suspicious that half the boarders have a last name of Wells. And that's pathetic when you have a city of over twenty thousand people. We should be getting no less than twelve names on the ballot. That's two people running for each seat. It's very important. If you care about the library, we really need to have people take over. And that's why I stayed on. And I begged Dossie Thompson. I've been there since two thousand four. She was there longer than I was. I only stayed on there because I was concerned that we could have had all new board members and all be on there. Matter of fact, I paid a hundred dollars. I didn't have time, cause I wasn't gonna run again at that time. So I'm I'm gonna be going from here on out, asking people to consider running for the library board. And I wanna say two things real quick. One of the things I'm gonna ask the board to consider looking to is having staggered elections instead of having all seats up for grabs at one time. I think this would be more stability that way. And the other thing, and some of the board members are gonna be unhappy with me saying this, but they're already unhappy with me, so it doesn't matter. I also, uh, a couple of years ago told them, we should look into the pros and cons of our current library establishment, but also look into the pros and cons of forming a district library. I'm not saying that's what we should do, but you should at least do a study so you know all the options that are available, should a millage not pass or should you have problems going forward. I'm just one of those type of person. I don't care whether I think it's popular or not. It's just that you have to look at what's the right thing to do for the future of the library. So those are the announcements that I wanted to make and I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will Miller.
Good morning, co- evening, council administration. I ain't slept in a day and a half. All right. Good day to everybody. Um, real quick business coming out of my household. There is still a street light on our street that's out. Um, I stay on Monticello Street, right across the street from my house. Light been out now for, it's rolling towards a month. Um, we had some folks almost hit some of the cars that's parked out there. You know, in the nighttime, they're coming around. They can't see it. It's starting to get a little bad. So we gotta, we need to get that light fixed. I need to get the light fixed in front of my home. The street lights are out. Um, it is, it is starting to become a little bit dangerous. So we we hoping that we can get that done kinda quickly. Um, two, six, five, seven, two. Yes, sir. Monticello Street. Yes, sir. I truly appreciate it. Um, y'all spoke a little bit in the meeting about uh doing some some investing for the uh for the funds that the city has now available to invest um through the bond market, it's looking more like. And I saw that you were gonna be pooling funds. I was curious through the chair if I could ask the treasure, ask the the treasurer what the difference or what the benefit would be as far as investing on, the city investing on its own versus pooling its fund with other communities. What's the? What's the pros and cons for that?
We, there's a, a specific product that's geared towards municipalities, and they are able to basically cobble together or piece together different types of investments that are allowed under the state law. Whereas if we did it individually, we would have to be investing separately into a number of different products, coupled with the fact that by pooling them, we're able to get, in many cases, better returns, or we can, we can get the benefit of, of, of some, some, the effects of having larger investments, you know? Because generally, you're required to have a minimum level of investment for certain, certain products. So, some products that we wouldn't otherwise not be able to get into by, by investing through this pool, we're able to, to get into all different types of investments that are allowed under the state law.
Okay, so basically, the larger size of the pool allows for investments with a better yield on it?
And, and, and it really eliminates our having inability to, to invest in certain types of investments due to the sizes of the investments that we would be making. Like, for this investment, we're looking at something in the neighborhood of five million dollars. We would have a limited ability to invest in, in a, you know, cross-the-board type of investments. Whereas by going into this pool, it opens up a wider array of, of investment products for us.
Okay, I appreciate that. Staying with the investing in interest rates, well, since the interest rates are going up, it's allowing for better time for us than investing in the, in the less volatile investments. But also, do y'all have any projects that you will have to borrow from before the rates get too high? You know, to try and take advantage of the lower interest rates to borrow now?
Sure, yeah, we haven't gone to the credit markets in some time. We have a few, few outstanding bond, bonds that have been issued in, in the past. Because of the city's financial troubles, we haven't, the credit markets haven't generally been open to us. There are some vehicles that are available at the state level, essentially where you utilize the state's credit authority to issue bonds. And that's, that can be an option for us when we start looking at funding some of our road and potentially water and sewer projects. But just given the city's recent financial history, it hasn't been a, a short-term option at this point, but it's certainly something that we're looking, as we start presenting to mayor, with different alternatives for, particularly on the infrastructure piece, the roads, water, sewer projects. As you say, we're in a, an environment where interest rates are increasing, so it does make sense to look at those in the short term, for sure.
One more thing, before I run out of time here, I'm, just to introduce myself, my name is Will Miller. I'm still the president of the National Action Network here in Inkster, Western Wayne County. Something I want to mention to the community, the police chief out in Westland has been kind enough to open up for every other Friday meeting with anybody who may have had some issues with the Westland Police, where they think they need some things addressed. He is now open to having a meeting directly with him and his deputy chiefs every other Friday. So, if anybody has any questions or concerns, or had any issues with them, with the Westland Police Department, you can reach out to me, you can reach me at three-one-three-seven-two-zero-zero-one-eight-six. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, we have J.B.I., we have anything from Jewel's office?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Inkster family. For those who don't know, I'm J.B.I. Johnson, Chief of Staff for State Rep Jewel Jones. On behalf of State Rep Jewel Jones, who's currently at a Democratic Caucus meeting, I just want to say that we are still on the fight for our lives, for a better livelihood, November sixth. We still need you all to get out and vote. And though I know all of you in here already know the importance of voting, it's also important to tell your neighbors. So, I strongly suggest, if we all want to have a better life for ourselves, we have to make sure that people in our community want the same thing that we encourage everybody, neighbors, family, friends, church members, anyone you know, anyone you come in contact with, just stress to them that we need to get out and vote, because this is very important. November sixth, thank you.
Thank you. And we have just the council communications, councilwoman, oh, I'm sorry, I always skip the clerk.
I got some important announcements. Inkster, you all have been showing up. The clerk's office has been extremely busy with A.V. applications, I'm so excited. So, somehow, you all are getting to work, because you're coming out. I just want to remind everyone that this election, there is no more straight party voting. You have to vote each candidate that you would like to vote for of your choice. So, I would also like to ask any resident, if you would like an A.V. application, A.V. valid, to contact the city clerk's office at three-one-three-five-six-three-nine-seven-seven-zero. Thank you all, and keep them coming.
I forgot one speaker, Tracy Green. Even though my favorite color is blue. She is still welcome.
No dog in that crowd. Good evening, honorable mayor, city council members. Forgive me. Hit the button on the right. And other elected officials. Thank you so much for this opportunity. My name is Tracy Green, and I too am running for one of the three open seats on the Third Circuit Court, which of course is the Wayne County Circuit Court. I have been practicing law primarily in that court for the past twenty-one years, where I've been representing indigent defendants in felony matters, advocating for the best interests of children in contested custody matters. And most especially, I have been zealously defending and fighting to preserve families. And when children have been removed in child protection matters, to reunite families. And I've been recognized by the Michigan Supreme Court for my work. I have also been rated highly recommended by the Women Lawyers Association of Michigan, and I've been rated well-qualified by the Wolverine Bar. I'm twice published in the area of child protection, and I ran the Detroit Center for Family Advocacy for seven years, all seven years of its existence as a, as the legal director. And that was a program that was affiliated with the University of Michigan's Law School, again, to help keep children out of foster care. And I, I emphasize the details about child protection, because it's pretty well-accepted that one of the three open seats is going to be in the juvenile section of the Domestic Relations Division in the Third Circuit Court. And it's my judicial philosophy that I would like to present to you, which is extremely simple. It's predicated upon our common notions of decency, and it's simply fairness, dignity, and respect. I believe that when people think that they have been treated fairly, that they have been respected, and their dignity has been preserved, that even if they don't like the result of it, or outcome of a proceeding, they're more likely to abide by the rule of the court and to have respect and reverence for the court. And in this day and age where we are losing confidence in our governmental institutions, I think that's very important. And just in an effort to wrap up on a personal note, I am a lifelong Detroit-er. I am a product of Detroit Public Schools, Cas Tech was my alma mater. And I received both my undergrad and my law degree from Wayne State University. My parents are two ninety, they're, they're, well, ninety-one and ninety-two-year-old retired UAW workers. So, I come from a home where hard work is no, was no stranger to me, and they taught me integrity and servant leadership. I'm a mother, a grandmother, a wife, and I hope that, because of my life experience, in addition to my professional experience, you and others here in Inkster would consider me as qualified to sit on the Third Circuit Court bench. So, thank you so much for your time. My website is gogreenforjustice.org, that's go green for justice, green like the color, as in no green, no justice. And I thank you so much for your time.
It's kind of like go blue.
It's not at all like go blue. But blue's a good color. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Treasurer?
No comments, thank you.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Ooh, had to go first. Good evening, everyone. In the spirit of making sure that we get out the vote, I would like to announce that on October twenty-fifth, here in the city of Inkster, at six o'clock P.M. at the Floyd B. Simmons Building on Carlisle and Middlebelt, there will be a meet and greet, candidate meet and greet, and issues forum. There are some very important referendums on our ballot. And for those of you who are not going to cast absentee ballots before you go to the polls, I hope you can join us so that you can understand what these issues mean for us. Gerimandering, recreational marijuana, Wayne Westland has a bond issue on the ballot, Wayne County Community College. You need to understand what you're voting for, and the ramifications are, what the ramifications for your vote might be. So, we're inviting all of the residents from wherever you are that can hear my voice. There will be plenty of advertising done, that's October twenty-fifth, at six o'clock P.M. at the Floyd B. Simmons Center on Carlisle, just east of Middlebelt Road. And we are inviting all candidates. You don't care whether they're Republican, Green Party, what, you have the right to know who's out there running for office. And the more educated you are as to who is out there, the better off we'll all be. So, I hope that you will join us. You are, Ms. Cole, Ms. Morrison, Ms. Morrison and Ms. Green, you are certainly invited, and I'll talk to you after. Thank you.
Thank you.
Six o'clock P.M.
Councilwoman Oden?
Thank you, mayor. I just want to acknowledge Ms. Cooper, Ms. Bailey, for their continuous efforts here in the city of Inkster, activities that they're always undertaking. They're always, they're always there, and it means a lot to have people like that here in the city of Inkster. We actually need many, many more to take part in what's happening, what's going on in the city, and, and showing some care and love for the city. I also like to note that I attended the Western Wayne County NAACP Annual Event yesterday. It was well-attended. John Conyers was the person who was recognized among many more. Main point, they were getting out, was acknowledging those people who have done so much for the NAACP over the years. And I just want to put it out there to the citizens that the Western Wayne County NAACP is basically on the move, they're on the roll, and they're putting plenty of emphasis on the upcoming election. So, I support them, and I ask everyone here to get out and vote on the sixth. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Whiteley?
Thank you, mayor. Citizens, I'd like to remind you that the ICAN, the convoy, will be winging its way through the housing community on Halloween, the thirty-first. We will meet at the Berger Baylor Center on Middlebelt and Carlisle. From there, we'll load up our cans, our cars with candy, and we'll drive through the communities of those children who don't have the ability to get out to the rec center or any of the other places where there are parties, we deliver to them. So, we invite you to join us, we invite you to donate. And on the note of donating, I would like to thank First Step, Yvette Bra, for her, New Step, I'm sorry. You know what, your first step is new. No, New Step, for her generous donation of candy, I think it's something like six cases of candy for us. And that is just, I have to give her. Thank you very much, and I hope you set an example for everybody else. So, thank you. The other thing, I, I would be remiss if I didn't join my colleagues in telling you about voting. It is so, people always say, "Go vote, go vote," but they don't tell you why, or they try and jerk your heartstrings and say things like, "Your parents died for this purpose." Yeah, but you need to vote for the people still here now. And all voting is, is you securing resources for your group. That's what we're doing when we vote, we're securing a representative who will take care of our needs. And we need to start remembering that that's what we need to do. So, once you realize that this voting is not for any ethereal idea or whatever, it's so you can survive. We have to remember that. So, I'm encouraging everybody to vote as if your life depended on it, because it does, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Howard? Nothing? Councilman Chisholm?
I just wanted to let everybody know that for the Halloween party, the planning department are going to zombify me. I want you all to make sure you come out and see how I can transform and put on yet another hat. And then also today, just a reminder, the street sweeping started today, so be cognizant of that. That's all I have.
Mayor Proctor?
Wayne County Treasurer Office is hosting their second annual Veterans Resource Fair. It's on Thursday, November the eighth, at ten A.M. to two P.M. It's going to be held at the Northwest Activity Center, that's at one-eight-one-zero-zero Myers Road in Detroit. And for more information, you can contact Ms. Beverly Hilton at area code three-one-three-two-two-four-six-zero-three-five. And Shok Inkster, thank you.
I'm going to add a little bit to what Councilman Chisholm said regarding the street sweeping. The street sweeping contractors will be following the trash routes, starting with Friday's route.
They start today?
Start, which means they start today. They're starting in the northeast section. They'll be working through the city, one day behind the regular trash route. So, be cognizant, the day after your trash day, they'll be coming through to clean the streets. So, move all the jalopies off the streets and the hoopdees, so they can get down the street. And let your neighbors know too, and knock on some doors, so we can make sure we can get around and get the streets clean. Also, on this Thursday, October eighteenth?
I said, we can't get signs.
But then we, we used to have signs.
Jerome Pooh Pooh the signs.
Maybe he can get some money from Darren.
Get some portable signs.
They'll see him out there, so how, they're going to be doing it for how long?
They usually take a while, they follow right behind, like, they finish Friday the day, they finish the route, like, trash route. Monday, today, they have to be sweeping Monday section tomorrow, so they go right behind the trash.
The day, uh-huh.
Good, we had a, one of my neighbors requested, some of these streets, which is probably all the streets, the people are speeding down the neighborhood, can you get one of those digital signs to tell them how fast they're going? So, Nora O'Brien requested that, I told her I would pass that on to you. Police chief, you too.
He ain't paying no attention to you.
He's at some other meeting. So, on Thursday the eighteenth, we'll have lunch with the mayor, I'm sure our topic will be the election. So, everybody's welcome, talk about all the different proposals and the people who are running for what, in a nice, relaxed atmosphere. And Friday, October twenty-sixth, we're going to dedicate Parkwood Park. So, Ms. Shockley's going to be there, we're inviting the middle man of Block Club, where's Gabe, the Gabe Lee? Okay, can somebody please call Ms. Gross and let her know, so she can let the whole Block Club know to come out, so we can do the dedication at eleven A.M. on the twenty-sixth. Miss Ball?
Announce the, announce the test for Seagull.
Okay, so we definitely want to get that, before it gets too cold, we want to get everybody out there. So, we won't be out there long, we'll cut the ribbon and bust the champagne, or whatever we do.
Cider.
Cider.
Bartlett cider.
There we go, okay. All right, and that's all I have, I want to thank everybody for coming out today. Oh, yeah, the sidewalk in front of Twin Towers is finished, looks great. I saw people walking on it like, while it was still drawing, drying. I, I was flashing my lights and stuff. But, he was using the sidewalk, so that's a good thing, instead of being in the street. So, as some of your textileers, how'd that work? And of course, we want to thank the county, Warren Evans, for doing that joint venture with us.
Motion for a jury.
Senior form, whoops.
Oh, go ahead.
Twenty-fifth, October twenty-fifth, eleven-thirty, at the rec center. Twenty-fifth, October twenty-fifth, eleven-thirty, at the rec center. We're going to have a couple of guest speakers, and have a lot of information for the seniors in the community, so make sure you spread the word and come out, and enjoy the luncheon. We do it once a year, it's a great event. Motion for adjournment?
Support.
Proper move, supported, discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? You're passing.
He passed this down the television. I had to borrow a hard copy.
Make sure you move your loosey off the stool.
Mr. Mayor?
What time did you say that was on the twenty-fifth? It's eleven-thirty.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to tell you that I have been talking to Detroit, and they give out these packs to kill ground dogs.
I'm calling y'all for the sweep, then I have to.